In the morning light, I see your face Soft like a breeze, full of grace I don't need riches, I don't need fame Just your sweet smile, calling my name Is this love? Is this real? Tell me now, how you feel? Cause every beat of my soul is true This heart, this heart for you Walk with me, through storm and sun We don't need much, we only need one Hand in hand, just you and I Under the moon, under Jah's sky Is this love? Is this fire? Burning deep, climbing higher No silver, no gold will ever do This heart, this heart for you And when the nights get cold I'll be your warmth to hold No need to run, no need to hide You got a lion by your side Is this love? Is this fate? We're not early, never late Time can break what feels so true This heart, this heart for you And when the nights get cold I'll be your warmth to hold No need to run, no need to hide You got a lion by your side Is this love? Is this fate? We're not early Sunrise kisses the ocean wide Waves keep dancing with the tide Roots run deep where love resides Feel the rhythm, let it guide Ohhh Freedom flows in every beat Warm like fire, strong like heat Lift your voice, move your feet Roots of reggae can't be beat Palm trees sway to the ancient drum Echoes of where we all come from In the breeze, hear the spirit hum A song of love, it won't succumb Ohhh Freedom flows in every beat Warm like fire, strong like heat Lift your voice, move your feet Roots of reggae can't be beat We plant the seeds, we watch them grow Through the storms, through the air that flows A melody, the world will know Love is the rhythm, let it show Let it show Let it show Let it show The stars above, they shine so bright Guiding us, through the darkest night With every step, we feel alive Roots of reggae, hearts unite Let it show We plant the seeds, we watch them grow Through the storms, through the air that flows A melody, the world will know Love is the rhythm The sun it rises through the haze Casting light on brighter days Roots dig deep where hearts collide Guided by Jah, we take the ride, the ride Oh, the rhythm flows like a river wine Feel the pulse and let it guide Roots of the soul, they never fade In the heart of the music, we've got it made The drumbeat speaks, it tells no lies Truth it echoes under skies The bassline walks the path so true Carrying wisdom, old and new Oh, the rhythm flows like a river wine Feel the pulse and let it guide Roots of the soul, they never fade In the heart of the music, we've got it made Feel the breeze of a rebel wind Carving stories where love begins From the earth, the melody grows In its arms, the struggle shows Harmony rises with the moon A distant cry, a sacred tune Unity binds us hand in hand Together strong, we make our stand Harmony rises with the moon A distant cry, a sacred tune Unity binds us hand in hand Together strong, we make our stand Oh, the rhythm flows like a river wine Feel the pulse and let it guide Roots of the soul, they never fade In the heart of the music, we've got it made I feel the breeze of a rebel wind Carving stories where love begins From the earth, the melody grows In its arms, the struggle shows
Flickers dance in the night skies glow Your eyes a spark where the wild winds go No map to guide us, no stars align But your hand in mine, feels like home in time The world's a whisper, the chaos fades In your arms, I'm safe through the storms and shades No need for answers, no need for why Just the rhythm of hearts as the days go by Love's a fire, it's a roaring flame Burns through the doubt, melts away the shame In your laughter, I find my flight We're endless, we're bound by love's firelight A quiet moment, the world holds still Your voice a song that the stars can't kill No perfect picture, no painted dream Just the beauty of us flowing like a stream They'll say we're crazy, we'll lose the game But we'll write our story without the fame In the ashes, we'll find our way Through the dark, to the dawn of another day Love's a fire, it's a roaring flame Burns through the doubt, melts away the shame In your laughter, I find my flight We're endless, we're bound by love's firelight Flickers dance in the night skies glow Your eyes a spark where the wild winds go No map to guide us, no stars align But your hand in mine, feels like home in time The world's a whisper, the chaos fades In your arms, I'm safe through the storms and shades No need for answers, no need for why Just the rhythm of hearts as the days go by Love's a fire, it's a roaring flame Burns through the doubt, melts away the shame In your laughter, I find my flight We're endless, we're bound by love's firelight A quiet moment, the world holds still Your voice a song that the stars can't kill No perfect picture, no painted dream Just the beauty of us flowing like a stream They'll say we're crazy, we'll lose the game But we'll write our story without the fame In the ashes, we'll find our way Through the dark, to the dawn of another day Love's a fire, it's a roaring flame Burns through the doubt, melts away the shame In your laughter, I find my flight We're endless, we're bound by love's firelight
I saw your shadow in the fading light You stole my breath like a thief in the night A million stars, but none shine as bright You are my dawn, my endless delight Love in the air, it's wild and free A fire inside, it's you and me No chains can hold, no walls can stand When love is bold, it takes command Your laugh's a song, it dances with the breeze Your touch is magic, brings me to my knees In your embrace, the world disappears With every beat, you calm my fears Love in the air, it's wild and free A fire inside, it's you and me No chains can hold, no walls can stand When love is bold, it takes command Even the moon envies our glow Even the tides bow to our flow Through every storm, we'll rise above Bound by the force, the power of love Love in the air, it's wild and free A fire inside, it's you and me No chains can hold, no walls can stand When love is bold, it takes command It takes command It takes command It takes command Love in the air, it's wild and free A fire inside, it's you and me No chains can hold, no walls can stand When love is bold, it takes command
I saw your face in the morning glow A spark of light in the world below You walked right in and time stood still A love so wild, it bends my will When love like fire, burning high Lighting up the midnight sky It's reckless, it's bold, it's all we know Love like fire, never lets go Your laugh cuts through like a summer breeze A melody that brings me to my knees Oh world, the world could crumble, the stars could fall But in your arms, I've got it all Love like fire, burning high Lighting up the midnight sky It's reckless, it's bold, it's all we know Love like fire, never lets go Through the storms, through the rain Through the joy and through the pain We'll keep burning hearts aglow A love like this will always grow Love like fire, burning high Lighting up the midnight sky It's reckless, it's bold, it's all we know Love like fire, never lets go Love like fire Through the storms, through the rain Through the joy and through the pain We'll keep burning hearts aglow A love like this will always grow Love like fire, burning high Lighting up the midnight sky It's reckless, it's bold, it's all we know I saw your face in the morning glow A spark of light in the world below You walked right in and time stood still A love so wild, it bends my will Love like fire, burning high Lighting up the midnight sky It's reckless, it's bold, it's all we know Love like fire, never lets go Your laugh cuts through like a summer breeze A melody that brings me to my knees The world could crumble, the stars could fall But in your arms, I've got it all Love like fire, burning high Lighting up the midnight sky It's reckless, it's bold, it's all we know Love like fire, never lets go Through the storms, through the rain Through the joy and through the pain We'll keep burning hearts aglow A love like this will always grow Love like fire, burning high Lighting up the midnight sky It's reckless, it's bold, it's all we know Love like fire, never lets go Never lets go Through the storms, through the rain, through the joy and through the pain. We'll keep burning hearts aglow. A love like this will always grow. Love like fire, burning high. Lighting up the midnight sky. It's reckless, it's bold, it's all we know. Love like fire, never lets go. Your touch is a map with no clear line. A riddle of stars that refuse to align. Your eyes are oceans, I dive too deep. In their wild waves, I lose my sleep. Your words are whispers that break the air. They linger like shadows but vanish nowhere. Your laugh is a spark that lights my way. It burns my soul at the end of the day. Oh love, you're a fire I can't contain. A sweet kind of chaos driving me insane. You lift me up, then tear me apart. But I keep coming back to the pull of your heart. Your smile's a sunrise that blinds my view. A dangerous glow yet I'm drawn to you. Your silence speaks louder than any sound. In its hollow echo, my heart is bound. You're a mystery I'll never solve. A puzzle piece that doesn't evolve. But even in the cracks of this fragile mess, I see a beauty I can't suppress. Oh love, you're a fire I can't contain. A sweet kind of chaos driving me insane. You lift me up, then tear me apart. But I keep coming back to the pull of your heart. Oh love, you're a fire I can't contain. A sweet kind of chaos driving me insane. You lift me up, then tear me apart. But I keep coming back to the pull of your heart. I saw your shadow in the fading light. You stole my breath like a thief in the night. A million stars, but none shine as bright. You are my dawn, my endless delight. Love in the air, it's wild and free. A fire inside, it's you and me. No chains can hold, no walls can stand. When love is bold, it takes command. Your laugh's a song, it dances with the breeze. Your touch is magic, brings me to my knees. In your embrace, the world disappears. With every beat, you calm my fears. Love in the air, it's wild and free. A fire inside, it's you and me. No chains can hold, no walls can stand. When love is bold, it takes command. Even the moon envies our glow. Even the tides bow to our flow. Through every storm, we'll rise above. Bound by the force, the power of love. Love in the air, it's wild and free. A fire inside, it's you and me. No chains can hold, no walls can stand. When love is bold, it takes command. Even the moon envies our glow. Even the tides bow to our flow. Through every storm, we'll rise above. Bound by the force, the power of love. Love in the air, it's wild and free. A fire inside, it's you and me. No chains can hold, no walls can stand. When love is bold.
Sands recast into muds past far. Earth beneath my feet so wise and old. Roots run deep where the stories unfold. Feel the rhythm, let the truth be told, yeah. Oh, we stand strong like the ancient trees. Feel the breeze whisper through the seas. Life's a dance to the beat we please. Roots of the earth, we're free with ease. River flows steady carving its way. Mountains high, watch the world at play. Through the trials, love will always stay. Roots hold tight when the winds betray. Oh, we stand strong like the ancient trees. Feel the breeze whisper through the seas. Life's a dance to the beat we please. Roots of the earth, we're free with ease. Drumbeat calling to the hearts that stray. Guiding us home when we lose our way. Wisdom lives in the songs we replay. Roots of the earth will forever stay. Moonlight glows on the path so clear. Voices rise with a message sincere. Love and unity drown out the fear. Roots keep us grounded year by year. Oh, we stand strong like the ancient trees. Feel the breeze whisper through the seas. Life's a dance to the beat we please. Roots of the earth, we're free with ease. Drumbeat calling to the hearts that stray. Guiding us home when we lose our way. Wisdom lives in the songs we replay. Roots of the earth will forever stay. Drumbeat calling to the hearts that stray. Guiding us home when we lose our way. Wisdom lives in the songs we replay. Roots of the earth will forever stay. Moonlight glows on the path so clear. Voices rise with a message sincere. Love and unity drown out the fear. Roots keep us grounded year by year.
Your touch is a map with no clear line. A riddle of stars that refuse to align. Your eyes are oceans, I dive too deep. In their wild waves, I lose my sleep. Your words are whispers that break the air. They linger like shadows but vanish nowhere. Your laugh is a spark that lights my way. Yet burns my soul at the end of the day. Oh love, you're a fire I can't contain. A sweet kind of chaos driving me insane. You lift me up, then tear me apart. But I keep coming back to the pull of your heart. Your smile's a sunrise that blinds my view. A dangerous glow yet I'm drawn to you. Your silence speaks louder than any sound. In its hollow echo, my heart is bound. You're a mystery I'll never solve. A puzzle piece that doesn't evolve. But even in the cracks of this fragile mess, I see a beauty I can't suppress. Oh love, you're a fire I can't contain. A sweet kind of chaos driving me insane. You lift me up, then tear me apart. But I keep coming back to the pull of your heart. In the morning light, I see your face. Soft like the breeze, full of grace. I don't need riches, I don't need fame. Just your sweet smile calling my name. Is this love? Is this real? Tell me now, how you feel? Cause every beat of my soul is true. This heart, this heart for you. Walk with me through storm and sun. We don't need much, we only need one. Hand in hand, just you and I. Under the moon, under just sky. Is this love? Is this fire? Burning deep, climbing higher. No silver, no gold will ever do. This heart, this heart for you. And when the nights get cold, I'll be your warmth to hold. No need to run, no need to hide. You've got a lion by your side. Is this love? Is this fate? We're not early, never late. Time can't break what feels so true. This heart, this heart for you. This heart for you. When the nights get cold, I'll be your warmth to hold. No need to run, no need to hide. You've got a lion by your side. Is this love? Is this fate? We're not early, never late. Time can't break.
Time can't break what feels so true. This heart, this heart for you.
The sun sinks low, it kisses the sand. A cool breeze whispers through this land. The rhythm of life beats strong and true. In every heart it carries through. Feel the roots grow deep, feel the spirit rise. Under golden skies where freedom lies. Let the bassline roll, let the drums ignite. We dance in the glow of the firelight. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. The ocean hums with its ancient song. The waves remind us where we belong. Each note a story, each beat a dream. Flowing together like a timeless stream. Feel the roots grow deep, feel the spirit rise. Under golden skies where freedom lies. Let the bassline roll, let the drums ignite. We dance in the glow of the firelight. The earth is singing, can you hear the sound? A melody born where the roots are found. Let your soul sway, let your worries fade. In this rhythm, we are all remade. Feel the roots grow deep, feel the spirit rise. Under golden skies where freedom lies. Let the bassline roll, let the drums ignite. We dance in the glow of the firelight. The earth is singing, can you hear the sound? A melody born where the roots are found. Let your soul sway, let your worries fade. In this rhythm, we are all remade. Feel the roots grow deep, feel the spirit rise. Under golden skies where freedom lies. Let the bassline roll, let the drums ignite. We dance in the glow of the firelight. Your eyes are like the stars at night. A fire burns but feels so right. I stumble through this wild embrace. Love's a game I'm scared to chase. Your laugh's a song I can't forget. A melody I can't reset. I'm lost but somehow found in you. A world where dreams are breaking through. Hold me close, don't let me go. Hearts collide and time moves slow. In your arms I find my spark. Where heartbeats echoing in the dark. Your touch, it lingers like a flame. I'm breathless just to hear your name. A whispered word, a fleeting glance. This love's a risk of fearless dance. The sky could fall, the ground could shake, but nothing here could ever break. The way I feel, the way we are, you're my light, my northern star. Hold me close, don't let me go. Hearts collide and time moves slow. In your arms I find my spark. Where heartbeats echoing in the dark. Where heartbeats echoing in the dark. In the dark. In the dark. In the dark. Hold me close, don't let me go. Hearts collide and time moves slow. In your arms I find my spark. Where heartbeats echoing in the dark. Where heartbeats echoing in the dark. Your touch, it lingers like...
Sunrise paints the morning sky with gold. Earth beneath my feet so wise and old. Roots run deep where the stories unfold. Feel the rhythm, let the truth be told. Oh, we stand strong like the ancient trees. Feel the breeze whisper through the seas. Life's a dance to the beat we please. Roots of the earth, we're free with ease. River flows steady carving its way. Mountains high, watch the world at play. Through the trials, love will always stay. Roots hold tight when the winds betray. Oh, we stand strong like the ancient trees. Feel the breeze whisper through the seas. Life's a dance to the beat we please. Roots of the earth, we're free with ease. Drumbeat calling to the hearts that stray. Guiding us home when we lose our way. Wisdom lives in the songs we replay. Roots of the earth will forever stay. Moonlight glows on the path so clear. Voices rise with a message sincere. Love and unity drown out the fear. Roots keep us grounded, year by year. River flows steady carving its way. Mountains high, watch the world at play. Through the trials, love will always stay. Roots hold tight when the winds betray. Oh, we stand strong like the ancient trees. Feel the breeze whisper through the seas. Life's a dance to the beat we please. Roots of the earth, we're free with ease. Oh, we stand strong like the ancient trees. Feel the breeze whisper through the seas. Life's a dance to the beat we please. Roots of the earth, we're free with ease. We're free with... Moonlight glows on the path so clear.
Your eyes are like the stars at night. A fire burns but feels so right. I stumble through this wild embrace. Love's a game I'm scared to chase. Your laugh's a song I can't forget. A melody I can't reset. I'm lost but somehow found in you. A world where dreams are breaking through. Hold me close, don't let me go. Hearts collide and time moves slow. In your arms I find my spark. Where heartbeats echoing in the dark. Your touch, it lingers like a flame. I'm breathless just to hear your name. A whispered word, a fleeting glance. This love's a risk of fearless dance. The sky could fall, the ground could shake, but nothing here could ever break. The way I feel, the way we are, you're my light, my northern star. Hold me close, don't let me go. Hearts collide and time moves slow. In your arms I find my spark. Where heartbeats echoing in the dark. The sky could fall, the ground could shake. But nothing here could ever break. The way I feel, the way we are, you're my light, my northern star. Hold me close, don't let me go. Hearts collide and time moves slow. In your arms I find my spark. Where heartbeats echoing in the dark.
The moonlight dances on her face. A stolen moment in this space. No words can capture what I feel. This heart is hers, it's sealed, it's real. Love is a spark, a burning flame. It's wild untamed. It's never tame. It breaks the rules, rewrites the script. A tender touch, a stolen kiss. Her laughter echoes in my soul. With every smile she makes me whole. A universe within her eyes. A galaxy that never dies. Love is a spark, a burning flame. It's wild untamed. It's never tame. It breaks the rules, rewrites the script. A tender touch, a stolen kiss. We fall, we rise, we find our way. Through shadows dark and skies of gray. But in her arms, I'm always home. A place where I am not alone. Love is a spark, a burning flame. It's wild untamed. It's never tame. It breaks the rules, rewrites the script. A tender touch, a stolen kiss. The sun it rises through the haze Casting light on brighter days Roots dig deep where hearts collide Guided by Jah, we take the ride Oh, the rhythm flows like a river wide Feel the pulse and let it guide Roots of the soul, they never fade In the heart of the music, we've got it made The drumbeat speaks, it tells no lies Truth it echoes under skies The bassline walks the path so true Carrying wisdom old and new Oh, oh, the rhythm flows like a river wide Feel the pulse and let it guide Roots of the soul, they never fade In the heart of the music, we've got it made Feel the breeze of a rebel wind Carving stories where love begins From the earth, the melody grows In his arms, the struggle shows Harmony rises with the moon A distant cry, a sacred tune Unity finds us hand in hand Together strong, we make our stand Our harmony rises with the moon A distant cry, a sacred tune Unity finds us hand in hand Together strong, we make our stand The drumbeat speaks, it tells no lies Truth it echoes under skies The bassline walks the path so true Carrying wisdom old and new Oh, oh, the rhythm flows like a river wide Feel the pulse and let it guide Roots of the soul, they never fade In the heart of the music, we've got it made In the morning light, I see your face Soft like the breeze, full of grace I don't need riches, I don't need fame Just your sweet smile calling my name Is this love? Is this real? Tell me now, how you feel? Cause every beat of my soul is true This heart, this heart for you Walk with me through storm and sun We don't need much, we only need one Hand in hand, just you and I Under the moon, under Jah's sky Is this love? Is this love? Is this fire? Is this fire? Burning deep, burning deep Climbing higher, climbing higher No silver, no gold will ever do This heart, this heart for you And when the nights get cold I'll be your warmth to hold No need to run, no need to hide You've got a lion by your side Is this love? Is this love? Is this fate? Is this fate? We're not early, we're not early Never late Time can grant, can break what feels so true True, true This heart, this heart for you Yeah, yeah Yeah, yeah, yeah The sun sings low, it kisses the sand A cool breeze whispers through this land The rhythm of life beats strong and true In every heart it carries through Feel the roots grow deep, feel the spirit rise Under golden skies where freedom lies Let the bassline roll, let the drums ignite We dance in the glow of the firelight The ocean hums with its ancient song The waves remind us where we belong Each note a story, each beat a dream Flowing together like a timeless stream Feel the roots grow deep, feel the spirit rise Under golden skies where freedom lies Let the bassline roll, let the drums ignite We dance in the glow of the firelight The earth is singing, can you hear the sound? A melody born where the roots are found Let your soul sway, let your worries fade In this rhythm we all remain Feel the roots grow deep, feel the spirit rise Under golden skies where freedom lies Let the bassline roll, let the drums ignite We dance in the glow of the firelight Feel the roots grow deep, feel the spirit rise Under golden skies where freedom lies Let the bassline roll, let the drums ignite We dance in the glow of the firelight Oh, oh, oh Whoa, whoa, oh, oh Oh, of the firelight Whoa, whoa, oh When I can feel, of the firelight Whoa, ooh, whoa, whoa Whoa Whoa, whoa The moonlight dances on her face A stolen moment in this space No words can capture what I feel This heart is hers It's sealed, it's real Love is a spark, a burning flame It's wild, untamed It's never tame It breaks the rules, rewrites the script A tender touch, a stolen kiss Oh, oh, oh Her laughter echoes in my soul With every smile she makes me whole A universe within her eyes A galaxy that never dies So, love is a spark, a burning flame It's wild, untamed It's never tame It breaks the rules, rewrites the script A tender touch, a stolen kiss We fall, we rise, we find our way Through shadows dark and skies of gray But in her arms, I'm always home A place where I am not alone Love is a spark, a burning flame It's wild, untamed It's never tame It breaks the rules, rewrites the script A tender touch, a stolen kiss Oh, oh, oh Oh, oh, oh Sunrise kisses the ocean wide Waves keep dancing with the tide Roots run deep where love resides Feel the rhythm, let it guide Oh, freedom flows in every beat Warm like fire, strong like heat Lift your voice, move your feet Roots of reggae can't be beat Palm trees sway to the ancient drum Echoes of where we all come from In the breeze, hear the spirit hum A song of love, it won't succumb Freedom flows in every beat Warm like fire, strong like heat Relift your voice, move your feet Roots of reggae can't be beat We plant the seeds, we watch them grow Through the storms, through the ebb and flow A melody, the world will know Love is the rhythm, let it show The stars above, they shine so bright Guiding us through the darkest night With every step, we feel the light Roots of reggae, hearts unite Freedom flows in every beat Warm like fire, strong like heat Lift your voice, move your feet In the morning light, I see your face Soft like the breeze Soft like the breeze, full of grace. I don't need riches, I don't need fame. Just your sweet smile calling my name. Is this love? Is this real? Tell me now how you feel. Cause every beat of my soul is true. This heart. This heart for you. Walk with me through storm and sun. We don't need much, we only need one. Hand in hand, just you and I. Under the moon, under jive skies. Is this love? Is this fire? Burning deep, climbing higher. No silver, no gold will ever do. This heart. This heart for you. And when the nights get cold. I'll be your warmth to hold. No need to run, no need to hide. You've got a lion by your side. Is this love? Is this fate? We're not early, never late. Time can't break what feels so true. This heart. This heart for you. And when the nights get cold. I'll be your warmth to hold. No need to run, no need to hide. You've got a lion by your side. Is this love? Is this fate? We're not early, never late. Time can't break what feels.
I found a spark in a quiet place. A fleeting glance, a touch of grace. Your voice like thunder shook my ground. In your echo, my heart was found. Oh, love, you twist, you turn, you burn. A lesson learned at every turn. You break me open piece by piece. But in your chaos, I find my peace. The moonlight dances in your eyes. A secret language, no need for lies. Your laughter paints the night with gold. A story told, but never old. But love, you're wild, you're cruel, you're kind. You leave your mark, you steal my mind. A raging storm, a gentle breeze. You bring me to my knees with ease. Oh, love, you twist, you turn, you burn. A lesson learned at every turn. You break me open piece by piece. But in your chaos, I find my peace. And when the stars fade out to gray. I'll hold your light to guide my way. For love's a gamble. A game of chance. But with you, I'll always take the dance.
And when the. I found a spark in a quiet place. A fleeting glance, a touch of grace. Your voice like thunder shook my ground. In your echo, my heart was found. Oh, love, you twist, you turn, you burn. A lesson learned at every turn. You break me open, piece by piece. But in your chaos, I find my peace. The moonlight dances in your eyes. A secret language, no need for lies. Your laughter paints the night with gold. A story told, but never old. But love, you're wild, you're cruel, you're kind. You leave your mark, you steal my mind. A raging storm, a gentle breeze. You bring me to my knees with ease. God love you, well, you're cruel, you're kind. You leave your mark, you steal my mind. A raging storm, a gentle breeze. You bring me to my knees with ease. And when the stars fade out to gray. I'll hold your light to guide my way. For love's a gamble, a game of chance. But with you, I'll always take the dance. And when the stars fade out to gray. I'll hold your light to guide my way. For love's a gamble, a game of chance. But with you, I'll always take the dance. And when the stars fade out to gray. I'll hold your light to guide my way. For love's a gamble, a game of chance. But with you.